I don't think so.
We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council work session for Tuesday, uh, May, oh, sorry, Wednesday, May 8th. A continuation of Tuesday, May 7th.
Literally.
Yes, for the Wycomico County Council, uh, first item on the agenda for the work session is Salisbury Fire Department. Gentlemen, good to see you all here. Mayor? How's everybody? If you want to come up here to these tables, you're certainly may, they're still too far apart. Hold it. Seems a little...
What we normally do for the public and for the recordings, if you don't mind, starting, I guess, from my left to right, if you could just state your name and your title, your position, et cetera, that way we'll have it for the record.
Sure. Uh, Rob Frampton, Fire Chief, City of Salisbury Fire Department.
Randy Taylor, Mayor of the City of Salisbury.
Andy Kitsero, City Administrator, City of Salisbury.
Thank you. See, you don't have to push it, I don't think. It may be automatic.
Yeah. John Tall, Deputy City Administrator for the City of Salisbury.
Thank you, John. We'll, uh, give you guys the floor, let you go over it. As you know, um, we're aware of what you're asking for. I believe you're asking for two million, which is, uh, it was one million last year. You're trying to look at getting two million this year. So we're kind of here to just hear you out and see what you got, what you, your, uh, what your, what your arguments are, what the data represents, et cetera.
Okay.
And, uh...
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Chief Frampton's gonna handle a good portion of the, the, um, data presentation and anything you guys want relative to new slicing and dicing it. You know, God knows we've been over these numbers a bunch of different times. We're really coming here today just to kind of in reference to the agreement we had in place from last year, which is the two million dollar funding. Um, we, um, as a general statement, I think we, um, we're in a tight budget year. Of course, we've already committed to our two million dollars that we've, we're expecting to get from you. And, um, in, in defense of that, two million dollars, um, Chief Frampton's gonna go through a series of, um, different exhibits, I think, that show not only that we deserve of that money, but in fact, we are, uh, deserving of more funding, which we're hoping to ramp up over the next five years. And I think in fifth or sixth page of this presentation shows a, a ramp up over the next five years, starting in 2026. So, um, and with that, I'll just go ahead and, um, we'll yield the floor to Chief Frampton and we can kind of go through the numbers and get questions as you, as you have them.
Thank you.
Okay. So, uh, as the mayor alluded, um, you know, the county executive's put two million dollars in her budget, uh, this year. That does, uh, meet the terms of the agreement. If you look at page two of your, of the handout that was handed out there, uh, in the italics is from the signed agreement that we have in place.
I think the signed agreement was never approved by the county council, just for your reference.
Okay.
Thanks.
The, uh, call volumes there on page three listed are the 2023 fire call volumes for Station 1, 2, and 16. That's only in the, what we would call the county district there. Uh, EMS calls are broken out to, in the middle column, and I did separate out no transports and transports. That's been a question in the past. And then if you look at the total Salisbury calls in the county district were 4,406. Just to give you an idea, year over year, um, you don't have this in front of you, but I can certainly give it to you. The difference between 2022 and 2023, uh, what we call, uh, in our unincorporated district, EMS calls were pretty much flat. They were down less than 1%, .77. However, fire calls were up 9.4%. So that would be the county or the unincorporated portion of our district. And including calls outside of our district, which would be, uh, calls that we would assist Parsonsburg, Fruitland, Delmar, still within Wycomico County, uh, those calls were up 87% year over year from 2022 to 2023. So there's a tremendous need, um, by the county fire service for some of the resources that Salisbury's footing the bill for and providing. If you skip forward a little bit and look at quarter 2023 versus the data we have for quarter 2024, uh, first quarter 2024 is extremely busy for Salisbury. And again, this is not in front of you, but I can certainly get it for you. EMS calls...
You're saying we don't have it here?
You don't have this, this number that I'm quoting right here.
Okay, alright.
Um, the EMS calls, uh, in our unincorporated district were up 18.8% from first quarter 2023 to first quarter 2024. That's EMS calls. Fire calls were up 16.6%. So first quarter 2024 is extremely busy for, for Salisbury.
Would you be able to supply us that later on?
Yeah.
What's that?
You'll, you'll be able to supply us that information?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, thanks.
If you, yeah, it's the same information I presented to the city council for end of year '23 and first quarter 24.
Yeah, one thing I want to add, one of the, I don't want to interrupt, but one of the things that we net out of the calls in the unincorporated area are, you know, we're talking about, um, assisted, um...
Mutual aid.
Mutual assistance. We net those out. So actually, it's more calls than occurring than, that, once we have mutual assist, we don't count that call part of your unincorporated, just so you know that. Okay, just go ahead.
Yeah, and additionally, what we would refer to as self dispatch. So there are calls where the fire crew may hear. We weed those out of these numbers. So that's anything you say in front of...
Yeah, that's important.
That's weeded out, right? So we can't run the numbers up again. We realize that. The document in front of you, if you move along, um, discusses some funding, um, moving forward, um, just to give you an idea of, of, uh, you know, some different ways to approach county funding, uh, for the City of Salisbury. So if you just look at our total calls, fire calls in the county were 1,034. Um, Salisbury County EMS calls, 3,372. Total fire district calls were 16,314. So 27% of our call volume is outside of the municipal limits. Uh, our total city budget is 11.9 million, which the, if you break that down just as a simple percentage, that's the, this is the easiest method, uh, it comes down to 3.2 million, should be the, the, based on call volume, should be the county's portion of that, um, of the, what the city funds. If you flip the page and look at funding method number two, which is another alternative, it reflects upon, uh, some numbers that were used back in, I believe, the 2017 fire service agreement. So some of those numbers are definitely skewed, but we used them because that's what was agreed upon in the past. They certainly need to be adjusted, but, uh, the yellow numbers there, uh, breaking those calls out and the funding that was used in that, uh, previous fire service agreement, you can see that fire funding should be $378,000. The EMS breaking out the difference between transports and non-transports. And then, uh, assuming 40%. Agreement in 2017 assumed 60% and we just met actually yesterday with our billing company and, uh, the number that we were given was between 35 and 46% reimbursement rate. So we used 40% there, um, which would mean that EMS funding would net at 622,000. Um, just a little bit of discussion about the readiness, um, the cost of readiness. It's kind of like having insurance or having, uh, as the mayor said one time, uh, having a lifeguard, right? You're gonna pay that lifeguard to be there and hope that you never need it. So there's a cost of a fire department. You have insurance, uh, for the same reason. You hope you never need it, but when you do, it's there. So that cost, uh, needs to be shared and needs to be broken out. So you can see how we broke out our current staffing model with, uh, two engines, a ladder, and then the four ambulances. That's our current staffing model and the, uh, cost breakdown for that. You see, the total annual readiness cost would be 7.3 million. Using the call percentage, the 27.01% for, uh, the call volume as used in method one, that comes down to a readiness cost of 1.9. So...
Yes, if, uh, hang on one second.
Sure.
Uh, going back to the, um, the reimbursement, um, the reimbursement rate used to be 60%?
That was the number that was used in the 2017 fire service agreement.
Right. So...
I don't know why that number was picked.
Yeah, the, the, the origin of these numbers on a per-call basis and also on the, it's an unknown origin. I don't know where they came up with these numbers. Uh, we're, I think we're, what we're trying to say is while we're, we're willing to pay a little attention to that, the reality is, is this is the overhead, this is the percentage, this is what, you know, what we're having to afford to provide you the service we're providing. It's kind of the, the general, so we're paying attention to it, but I don't know where they came up with these numbers. I have no idea.
And the only reason I ask, well, go ahead, Andy.
No, I, I was just gonna echo that point on the cover sheet of the packet you guys have there. What we're talking about is providing service to you all. Again, we're talking about county area. We're not talking about the City of Salisbury. We're not even, we haven't even gotten to the conversation about having the county compensate us to provide calls to the City of Salisbury. We're just saying, here are three districts, Wycomico County Districts 1, 2, and 16, just like any RFP, if you want us to cover that territory on your behalf, we're asking to be compensated the exact same that you pay all the other departments to cover their territories. That's how you got to the 668 to the $2 million. That's kind of the crux of the, the funding request, and then these are some of the numbers that support that we should be getting more than that, but, but that's kind of the baseline. Just want to make sure we stay on point on what we're asking for in this year's budget.
On the 60%, 40% thing?
Yeah.
And I get it, you don't know where they came up with that, but that was an agreement that, that was on the county and the city at the time. So it was city administration and county administration that both said there is a 60% insurance reimbursement. So my question is, I, I would assume it's a real number. You know what the reimbursement is supposed to be from the insurance companies?
The real number from our medical billing provider that I gave you is 40% and that was as of yesterday.
Okay.
That's based on, that's based on current seven, not, not stuff from seven years ago.
And, well, the reason I asked the question wasn't to challenge it, but just as a curiosity.
Yeah.
What do the insurance companies do? Do they change the, the reimbursement rates?
Uh, they change all the time, whether it's cash payer, private payer, private insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, all of that goes into effect. What can be written off, what can be not. There's gross charges and then there's net charges and then there's actually what's brought in. We, we average about $300 collected per transport. Um, and we bill about 1,200 to 1,400.
If you could explain to, and if you bear with us, uh, the cost of readiness, that's one term for me, and I think it's certainly probably a whole new term for everyone here.
Oh, it's a, it's an established fire service term. Um, if you, if you do any kind of research across the country, there's a cost for having fire protection readily available in the station, units ready, units staffed, ready to respond. Obviously, if you have a volunteer fire department, there's still a cost of readiness. There's still fire engines that have to be ready to respond. They may not be staffed and in the building, but that's why you may have a lower cost of readiness, but you still have a cost of readiness.
So you consider it that you have a capital expense, you have a readiness cost, and then you sort of have a service cost, that's when they actually go out on, on, on a...
That's correct. Yeah, and there, and there's, there's a lot of assumptions that go into that readiness cost. You could include a laundry list of things. At the end of the day, there's certain assumptions that we just leave out. We, we narrow that list down. So there's hourly rate, there's fuel, there's overall budget, electricity costs, keep, you know, insurance costs, things like that, that are built into that readiness cost.
So it's, it's, those costs aren't really extrapolated out to the total cost for service. It's isolated as a separate entity.
Yeah, it's fixed assets, basically, building, equipment, you know, all the readiness component, yeah.
What it costs to stand it up, um, you know, and to have it readily available. And then, of course, when they go out the door, there's fuel costs, wear and tear, that's part of the response cost.
Okay, yeah, thanks. It's a new term for me.
Yeah, it was, me too.
So, uh, if you, if you put those, uh, that total funding at a million dollars a year, which is kind of ironically what we're, um, you know, had been in the past, and then you add that readiness of 1.9, uh, you come to a 2.982, which is slightly lower than method one, but, uh, within a couple hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so those two term, those two, uh, numbers kind of reflect a little bit more as to the reality of things. Um, if you look at the next page, this is just something, uh, to make you aware, and this isn't coming from the City of Salisbury, this is just coming from the fire service in general. Um, it doesn't matter whether you're a career volunteer, but if you look at those other counties, Talbot County, Caroline, Worcester, and Dorchester, you see the, uh, amount of money that they fund their fire service and EMS service countywide, and then you see where Wycomico sits. It's kind of sad. 9251 per capita. And, uh, you look at Dorchester, 164. So not quite double, but, um, you can see that there's, uh, significant room for improvement or you guys are getting a heck of a deal for your fire service.
Yeah, I think you would do the numbers, you back out, um, for us. We're paying somewhere in the order in the mid twenties for our, just our fire. You guys are below six and a half for your countywide. Um, now largely because you're doing a portion of that, a good portion, uh, some portion of that with the volunteer group. But of course, we have, you know, fixed assets, a lot of, a lot of equipment, a lot of people, you know, we're moving around the whole, whole footprint. So, um, still, you know, we're, even at the 2 million, you know, you guys aren't really showing up to the field yet.
Well, uh, we'd have to look at that. I, I don't know, I don't know if we're comparing apples to apples already. Now, you have different jurisdictions in each county.
They all run volunteer fire service. They do have some form of paid EMS, which essentially you, you all have as well. You just divvy it up into each individual department.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, Angelie Chatal, Internal Auditor. Uh, looking at the population number, 104, I, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but if I vaguely recall, 104 is the entire population of Wycomico County, not including the city. And so going back to like the numbers where we break out the per-call, shouldn't then this really be subtracting the city? And then that would actually make a much more, I don't know how much more, uh, higher per resident outside of the city that the county would then be funding? Is that not correct?
So this, this chart only takes into account the county population?
Correct.
And that 9.6 includes what's estimated to be funded, including the City of Salisbury, from the county?
So...
That 9.68 million is what's in the proposed 2025, uh, budget?
So that 9.6 is the city's...
The city's 2 million and the county's...
Plus the county's funding.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, city residents or county residents. I double taxed, I, so we should be included in that number.
Yeah, I wonder if maybe it would be more apt to have like a county portion and then county, like, like, cause it's, this is sort of mixing apples and oranges and trying to create like, I don't know.
Yeah, whatever you say.
Yeah, some sort of like fountain dew or something. Uh, you know what I'm saying?
I was thinking the same thing because we have the total amount of Wycomico County, 104. So the city's population, the municipal city should be separated from that 104.
But they're county residents.
Yeah, we, we pay...
They're county residents.
All the 104 is all the county residents?
Yeah, in county and city, and city pays taxes too. And it is the county's responsibility at the end of the day to provide coverage to the entire county. So if we closed up shop tomorrow, to your people, so...
We don't break out Fruitland's municipal district. We don't break out Sharp Towns Municipal District, Pittsfield.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Right.
Okay.
For the, uh, non-fire department expert, can you explain how mutual aid works? Cause I know the city comes out...
Sure.
The county comes in. Is that, does it wash out or...
Mutual aid works both ways. Um, and I don't know exactly what your question is, but yes, we, within Wycomico County, there's mutual aid between every fire department. So we provide, if they call, we go. If we call, they come. Um, it's, it's just unwritten. I mean, it's written, but it's, uh, it's just always been a history of the fire service, correct? So...
That's not figured into any of this, right?
Into, into this page is just strictly budget numbers. The, the, um, I mentioned earlier about the calls that are outside of the district and things like that, and I can get you the information on how many times those units come into, uh, the city for fire EMS. Um, and the thing to notice on, just one last thing on that, that, um, chart of comparing the, the, uh, cost per capita, you know, Wycomico's population is double or more of all of them. And, uh, you know, it, they're, the budget is only, it's still under $10 million total for fire EMS. The next is just a chart that kind of gives it a little bit of, uh, visual display there.
Yeah, and to your point about pulling out the city residents, we didn't pull out any of the, city residents in any of the other counties, so it's theoretically proportional, so...
Okay.
And kind of on the mutual aid, um, question, um, you know, there is a lot of unwritten, a lot of giving back and forth. I mean, currently, uh, if any follow the news, you saw Fruitland unfortunately had an accident with their engine a couple weeks ago. We've loaned them our fire engine, one of our fire engines. So they have that in their building, they have full use of that, um, until they can figure up and stand up a long-term...
It's got a carburetor problem, but it's... I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So that's just kind of the respect that exists amongst everything. It, there's no difference when you go out there at the end of the day between Salisbury and the county and, and the way we work on calls, so...
Fire breaks out, it doesn't matter whose name's on the door.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Um, Andy, did you want to talk to a little bit on the...
Yep, and just, uh, the biggest piece, as I mentioned, um, earlier, um, from a, you know, 2022 stats, there's the, the most accurate stats that we have, um, comprehensively. If we don't even count, um, fire calls within the City of Salisbury municipal boundaries and we just look at what I'll call the county districts, um, the most, the, the districts with the most call volume, number one, number three, and number six are the territories that we are covering, that we are asking for equal compensation on. In 2022, what we got paid for those calls was, um, 900, 1 million dollars. So in 2022, we covered 36% of the total calls and got paid 12% of the total allocation from the county. So I think that's a, a, a good stat for people to recognize.
Can you say that again, Andy? Just to be clear, that you're saying that the city, the county got a, like essentially a 12% discount, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so, um, um, of all of the, so if we're looking at all the calls in the county, we covered, um, our, of, of all those calls, a quarter of those calls, the 4,000 calls that we did, um, 4,350 calls, we were compensated a million dollars for those calls, which is 12% of the total funding. But we covered, of all of the total county calls, it was 38% of the, 36.7% of the total calls. So a bargain for, um, what we were compensated.
The, um, the next, the next page just shows some of the progress that's been made. Um, I, I know the council president said that the, uh, agreement was not, uh, accepted by, by them, but, uh, in, in our eyes and the county fire chief's eyes, we followed the terms of that agreement. They've invited me to be a part of their budget team throughout the past year and part of their budget preparation. Um, and, you know, in their words, we are shoulder to shoulder. Um, you'll see later at, I think, 4:15, um, when they come in, the, the united front, uh, that will come before you. Um, I don't know that that's ever existed, uh, at least in my time with Salisbury. And, uh, I think it's the way that the county and the city need to move forward together. Uh, and I think at the end of the day, that's what it boils down to. Um, you know, put districts aside, put, put city-county things aside, it's the Wycomico County Fire Service, and that's how it needs to move forward.
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, just for clarity, I'm, just run through this one more time. Uh, so looking at the numbers, you know, we're trying to figure out, what does this number look like? Um, method one, you're saying, you know, just go and buy percentage-wise, it's 3.2 million, uh, a little more than that is what we should, we should be paying the City of Salisbury. Uh, method two, um, dependent upon if you use readiness or not, but, um, at least the total cost just to have it, just the cost of what it takes to do it is over a million dollars. Adding in obviously all the rest of those, you can't be ready to, you can't, uh, you can't do it without actually being ready to do it and have people ready to go and have the, you know, the cost for all of that, I guess, as part of that.
Yes, and that million dollars is using numbers from 2017.
And then, uh, and so that puts it at a total 2.9 million. Uh, the question's brought up, I guess, about reimbursement in the past, and I don't know if that's just EMS reimbursement or the, the agreement that the city had between the 40% or 60% of that, I don't know if that's that total. I was trying to run some math off of that, like figuring what would that...
Sorry, I pulled out the EMS reimbursement rate, which is averaged at, at the 40%. That's the 414 that comes off of what normally would be the total EMS funding.
That's near the bottom of the left column.
That's correct.
Got it, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, okay, and then, uh, and then, yeah, so I guess, I'll, of course, I say this every year, and I feel like no matter what meeting I go to, the graphs always show, here's what Wycomico County funds, here's what everyone else funds, and it's way bigger. Um, and I always say, of course, as the only city resident of the seven members of the council, you know, I'm paying my taxes for the city, I'm paying my taxes for the county, uh, I'm paying a lot, um, I'm subsidizing what others aren't paying. Um, I think there definitely should be some fairness and some equity as part of that. Um, what portion of that, what that looks like, I don't know, uh, but, um, I am really happy to hear that, um, the, the county volunteer and you all are all together, uh, working together. Certainly, I would think going forward, we would want to have something that we can clearly say, okay, here's the calls that go to this area, here's a simple formula, and we should not have to guess off of what we used to do, what we could do, but to have something, you know, that clearly that we can all go off of, I look forward to that. Um, I definitely think we need to do much more than whatever we, what did we do last year for the city?
One million.
One million.
Yeah, so, I mean, it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, he's much more...
It's a 2017 rate, cause it's right there. I mean, using 2023 numbers, at the $20,170 amount, puts you at a million dollars. So we're, we're seven years behind for our price. Lots happened in, since 2017 for costs.
Appreciate all that you all do...
Absolutely.
...on behalf of the, for the entire county and not just, you know, my city.
Thank you for that.
These are figures we've been waiting for for quite a while, which is good to have.
Um, if you have the, you said you had mutual aid numbers, that would be great if we could get those as well, and, and whatever the sheets you had there would be...
For the 24, yeah, okay. Yeah, one of the things, I hope this is the message, and if anybody has any more questions, I'll, I'll stop, but, uh, you know, I'm a new mayor, and, uh, I don't want this to be a negative conversation, I want to be very positive. I mean, our, our fire department does a great job, but, um, you know, one of the things I realized when I got into these numbers, I'm kind of a math guy, and it was like, good Lord, um, I don't even understand. I mean, the one for a non, a non-transport, uh, EMS call is like $122 on, I mean, that's like DoorDash prices. I mean, you can't, I mean, what are we talking about here? I mean, going up the upper end of Maradona and then coming back and two guys and a $250,000 machine, I mean, come on. So anyway, long story, I think two minutes is kind of where we're, we gotta live, and I think we gotta talk about going forward. Um, and again, you know, John and I have talked privately about, talked to Shane about this, talked to Jeff about this. You know, it's like a thing, if you guys, you know, I don't, I don't want to do like a, you know, what we've done in the past, where we're out July 1st, you know? If you guys think you can transition to an EMT or EMS system and a, and a fire, we'll graciously bow out, but we've got to be funded in the meantime. And, um, we're, you know, we're in a place where, you know, we're financially, you know, doing what we can, but we're, you know, we're, we're in a tight spot right now, and we're doing what we can. So we need your support in our coverage of your area, so...
Any comments?
I just want to say this, I love the fire department. And I know, uh, by sitting on the city council, I know when you came before us with the budget, the equipment, the cost, um, and I'm so glad we got a fire department on the west side of Salisbury. So I know the job that you have to do and the expense of running a fire department. And, um, I think that it's almost just like the police department, we need the police and we need the fire department. the fire department. And I think unfortunately, this budget, you can't, we can't add anything in the budget. We only can take away. And I wish we could add in some circumstances, but the way that, I guess, where the charter is, because I was spoiled beyond the city, we could add and take away. We can't do that there. But I support, I support the 2 million, because we need the fire department.
Thank you.
And when I hear, when I hear the fire department going by my house every day, going up Nellie Mill Road, they might be going to, they, I don't know where they're going, but they're going straight past my house. I hear, I hear sheriffs going this way, so I know that somebody is using either ambulance or the fire department. You've had a lot of fires.
Have.
You have had a lot of fires, I know that, so.
Yeah, from our perspective too, you know, with, with the figures that you're showing here, to a certain extent can come out to the same theory that the council's had as far as what we feel is fair reimbursement. Where it's getting, catching me off guard, and possibly members of the council as well, is the cost of readiness. These are figures we've never seen before.
Yep.
So this is a completely new dynamic for us to have to absorb and, you know, review and see, you know, see how, what our, what our position is as well. So.
Yeah.
And it is, I mean, it's completely different from anything. We've always thought that those costs, the readiness costs, were wrapped up in your service, your fee for service call.
Right.
Whether it was EMS or fire, we thought it was all tied into one, but this adds a whole different dimension to it, so.
Yeah, the, the, method one, the, the cost of readiness is built into the city's $11.9 million budget, right? Whether we run, you know, there's a little bit there, I mean, for instance, our operating budget's, I think, 1.8, that covers our gasoline, our fuel, our vehicles and all this stuff. The rest of it basically is salaries. People don't, we don't, we don't make more money per hour if we run 100 calls a day or if we run 10, right? So there's a certain thing that's built into that, so that readiness is into that first figure, that's why it's the 3.2, the other one's 2.9, you know, they're very similar, and when you, when you come down to it at the end of the day, whether you try to break it out and separate it and do call versus readiness, or you just lump it all together into one, so.
Right. Challenging. Anybody else, any other questions? All right, gentlemen, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Very much so. Get that information to us as well, we'd really appreciate it.
I will.
Thanks again, good seeing you. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Miller, Recreation and Parks, I believe, is that correct?
Roads.
Roads.
Roads, solid waste, then Steve.
Good afternoon, Mike Swaby, Deputy Public Works Director.
So I was going to kind of treat this like we did yesterday, where I wrote over the, run through the variances, and if council has any further questions, we'll be glad to answer them. For roads, we increased our highway user revenue by $369,000, that's per a letter from the state of Maryland. We get an estimate every couple months as to how much highway user revenue is going to be, and so I take the, the latest one that I receive and utilize that for the budget. That $369,000 basically offsets the $300,000 that we're looking to increase the roads' costs in their department. As discussed yesterday, salary, pension, OPEB, health insurance, and health center are all the same concepts as discussed yesterday for raises, pension funding, new employees, spousal coverage, insurance rate increases, health center costs, and a worker's comp increase. So the main substantive changes to their budget is that they have two capital accounts that are going down because there are less things, less operating capital that is to be funded. And they're, they're asking for that capital then to be reallocated to the roads, to give $1 million to resurfacing. And as council is aware, there is a capital budget, which is in the back of the budget, and then there's operating capital, which are the items that are listed in the general fund line items associated with the budget. And those two are vastly different things that are being funded in different methods.
Anyone have questions on this?
We saw, I don't remember where I saw the figure on slurry seal and blacktop, how it appears it's going through the roof.
Well, the, the blacktop, we're taking, we're increasing it by $1 million. We're trying to get more paving done in more areas, but again, they decreased their purchases of capital equipment, and thus, those two pretty much offset each other.
So is that, are those increased figures because we're going to be doing more or because the costs have increased for us?
Yes.
Both?
Yes, it is, it is both.
So just, just to add to that, we're going to have a paving analysis done of every road in the system, all 700 miles, and they'll use special equipment to look at what the current condition is of, of the top coating of all of our alignments. And then what we'll do is we'll give the people that do that rating a standard that we expect to be maintained, and they'll go through the whole inventory and say, in order to meet that standard, based on the age of every road, this is what you should do in each situation. Some of them, the solutions are, you know, less expensive, don't involve full paving, they may just involve top coating, seal coating, that sort of thing. But what we want to do is begin an agnostic look at everything that's out there and have a sense on an ongoing basis of getting the longest life out of every paving solution we have out. And I think that's the way to do it, to engage with that analysis.
Any questions from anyone here? Yeah, Joe.
You set up a separate fund for vehicle leasing, correct?
You set up a separate department.
A department.
So all of the things that are listed in the general fund are departments.
Okay.
So library, roads, they're all departments, they are not funds.
So this department, that's, was it $950,000, I think it was, or something like that?
Approximately, yeah. That's, that is just covering the general fund purchases. So the other funds, Wreckin', Parks, Tourism, Civic Center, Airport, as we talked yesterday with Airport, they have their own leases in their fund. It is a, we've made the decision, and I'm, I'm anticipating a question, and maybe I'm not answering the right question, so let.
Let me, let me finish my question.
Yes, and I will then answer.
A few years ago, we paid benefits from one fund, from one department, I guess you wouldn't call it a one fund, and they've changed that and started assigning those costs to each department. Correct? That's the way they're done now, right?
Correct.
And that was done to get more of an accurate cost per department of what it costs to run a department.
Correct.
Okay, so by moving vehicle leasing into a separate department, how does it give an accurate cost of what a department is actually costing the citizens of Wycomico County?
So the decision was to, for that, is that the individual employee cost follows the employee. So the employee is in a department, and thus, their costs are in that department. The leases follow the fund. So the general fund is covered, is funded by the same sources of revenue, and thus, for primarily accounting purposes, we have made the decision that leases follow the fund, not the department. So yes, people think of Wreckin' Parks as a department, it is a department, but it's actually its own separate fund as well. So for accounting purposes and for tracking purposes, we have made the decision that leases, because leases are all managed by purchasing versus being managed by the individual departments, leases follow the fund, not the department.
I'm not criticizing it, what I'm asking.
That is the reason for that.
My, my question is, is how do we know the true cost of what a department is if the leases are being paid out of a separate department? I guess the answer to that question is we don't, correct?
We don't without doing additional analysis.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Joe, though, I mean, if, I'm not, I'm not from that world of finance to that extent, but I've always thought, you know, if you have different departments, you're trying to figure out, evaluate exactly how efficient you're running each department, you would have to know exactly what your costs were in each department.
So again, we're looking at it as, on a control level in that respect, because leases are not controlled by the departments. Leases are controlled by purchasing, and the department's making the decisions as to what they want to purchase.
And I get you on that, but the expense is coming from, that, that is, expense is being incurred by that department, and I think when we look at revenues and expenses per department, that should reflect that.
But we don't look at revenues and expenses in the general fund by department. We look at general fund revenue, which is all of our revenue sources, and we look at general fund departments as all of our expenses. So the decision, again, again, is partly for the size of the finance department, it is a, what we view as an unnecessary breakdown of expenses, because the general fund revenue is supporting all of these expenses. Could we? Yes. I don't view it as a total need, and again, it's not like we allocate specific revenues to specific departments within the general fund. The other funds that have their own revenue sources get all of their own expenses.
But benefits is paid in a broader scale.
But benefits follows an employee.
Still itemize that.
But benefits follows an employee.
Couldn't you say a lease follows an employee?
No.
The head gets a lease.
The lease, the lease follows a vehicle, and the vehicles are all managed by purchasing, so we put them all under one department. So that is how, that is the reason for how it is being presented.
Do we have any other questions on this?
Okay, so regarding salaries, there were two that kind of jumped out at me. One was the road superintendent, it was an increase of 24%, and then traffic control device specialist, I think, 24% also.
Are they vacant positions?
Uh, yes.
Well, then that's because we put them up to the midpoint so that we could fund them, so that we could potentially hire somebody who has experience.
So it's to encourage, oh, sorry.
It is.
I was going to say, the salary is usually that, right? And then they keep it at the midpoint when no one's in that position, and when they're looking to hire somebody, they raise it up, so it looks like a spike, right?
So, yeah, so we, if, if a position is vacant, we fund at the midpoint to allow us the ability to hire as broadly as we can. Again, we have come to this council multiple times because the funding, either somebody left after the budget was passed, so all we had in the budget was the funding amount of that person that was originally there, and thus, we needed more to hire somebody, or we have found somebody with significant experience and need to raise it above midpoint.
Yeah.
And so those decisions come to council.
Are these all in line with the paying classification plan?
Yes. They all meet within the, they all meet the grade and scale that is being proposed, at the 4% growth on the scale.
I had a question about, for the funding for Athel Road, I was just wondering what your timeline was on that.
So that is a capital project, so that is like the capital budget. So as such, with the budget amendment that council approved in fiscal '24, that has become a named project, that funding moves over to the capital project fund. The capital project fund is a multi-year fund, and so they're working on getting it, I believe, under contract to get that started for Athel Road.
We are, we're also doing the preparations for the, for the raised drainage facilities that have to be done before we would pave, so that work, the preparation in a sense, is nearly complete as a matter of fact.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So again, unlike operating capital, which has a year time limit, because June 30th happens, those funds revert back to the, to the fund that they came from, if they are not expended. Capital project funds, as we demonstrate in here, we transfer to capital projects. If you notice, when, in Department 46, there is a line item that says, "Transfer to capital projects." That's taking money out of the general fund and moving it to the capital project fund for very specific name projects. That's what we did with Athel Road.
It, it looks like there's a lot of associate equipment operator positions open. Are we trying to fill those positions? Because it looks like there's about a dozen.
Best we can. It, it is the market that we are currently in. We have an advertisement up at all times for vacant positions that are open.
Any questions, anybody? No? All right.
So moving on to solid waste. Solid waste, there is the main, the main changes as discussed before, salary, pension, OPEB, health insurance, health, health center, and workers comp. In addition, we are buying some significant operating capital equipment, and we're also transferring, so we are also have an increase in our bond principal and interest due to the fact that when we borrow funds for any capital project, they are not a straight-line borrowing. It is a, it's not like, you know, this is your, this is your interest and our, our payment is the exact same amount every year, it is not. It, it fluctuates based on the bidding that we received, and that's why when we actually issue to council the number, it is a blended rate that we are approving because it fluctuates up and down from that number for a blended rate over the life of the debt. So as such, these debt, this debt number has gone up. The biggest change to solid waste is that we're requesting for commercial haulers, commercial only, not household, is that for commercial haulers, it costs $100 a ton for them to go across our scales. The reason being is if we want this fund, and this one is a fund, to remain an enterprise and not be drawing from general fund revenues, we need to be starting to put money away for continual cell construction. And we have not been doing that. Last year, we actually had to use fund balance, some of that was for capital projects, but we should be putting money away every year, and we're not. We are getting to the point that we, building a cell is a significant cost. We really shouldn't have to borrow to build a cell, we are going to have to borrow, and we have borrowed to build a cell. And so our recommendation to council is that the commercial haulers be increased to $100 per ton when they go across the scales, so that the cost of actually maintaining a solid waste facility is being borne by the people who are, are dumping the waste in, in our landfill.
Has there ever been any kind of figures applied, what it costs, and this is probably really hard to do, what the tonnage payment is, is for people that's buying transfer station stickers, and what comes from this transfer stations, and how that figures out? How much are we getting a ton for that?
So the estimate is that a household transfer sticker is a household sticker, a person is buying basically a ton a year. That is the concept of what a household is in, is supposed to be generating. I unfortunately left a folder downstairs, and I apologize. I did a calculation as to, again, we're right now charging $67 a ton, and we are federal, we are mandated to set aside every year money for closing any cell that we have open. We are required to maintain cash to close every cell. So if you look at our financial statements, our financial statements have X dollars of cash, but then if you look down at our liability, we have X dollars for post-closure costs. Our cash number is supposed to always be, and it currently is, above our post-closure costs. But as we have more and more post-closure costs, that sucks up more and more cash. If I'm remembering my folder correctly, and I do apologize, I meant to bring it up with me and I did not grab it, it costs us just to cover depreciation on equipment, post-closure costs, our cost to have our employees, it costs us about $72 to $75 a ton. So we're charging 67, and we're not covering our current costs. Thus, we're also not putting anything away for the future to build anything further.
It's Somerset, Worcester, Bay.
Somerset.
I did, I did an extensive peer analysis of the adjacent counties, and I can share those numbers with you if you're interested, but there's another force at work in addition to what Pam was just describing. I mean, what we often have found, and we haven't done anything to really stop this, but we, we've found that haulers will have an alignment and finish their alignment in Wycomico County because we had the lowest, or one of the lowest per ton tipping fees. So they So they'd gather up the trash anywhere they could get it, including Delaware, where the rates were higher, and they would bring it here and dump it for $67 a ton. So in addition to Wycomico citizens paying for the freight on that, we're also accelerating the use of the headspace at the landfill. And we're, we're racing toward our capacity a lot quicker than we should be. So this price increase, and I can share those numbers with you if you want, I just have to pull it up on my laptop here, but the price increase does two things. It will have an effect on revenue because whenever you put the price of something up initially, it's, it's purchased less. And we do understand that. But we're hoping that it becomes a less attractive place to come. I mean, we're, we're not touching individual rates because we didn't want to harm people out of their household at all. But in terms of, in terms of commercial rates, we, we understood that those were impacting us to the greatest extent. So by raising the rates and keeping them within the range of the ones we looked at, we expect to adjust both the demand and at the same time be able to earn in the black.
And we understand that ultimately this will get passed on by the haulers. We get that. We understand that will, that will happen. The issue for us is we truly believe, based on no scientific data, but seeing the haulers is that a hauler will start the route in Worcester County at 6:00 AM in the morning, and they'll end their route in Wycomico County with, with a dump at our, at our facility. So again, there's nothing that says they can't do that. But we're incentivizing the local haulers to set their routes that we are the last place they go. Because, and such, as he stated, it means that our landfill fills up quicker, and we're not covering our costs of having those, that landfill.
So the cost will get passed on, as you say. And I understand fully about people hauling stuff to Wycomico County instead of to, have you, have you done a comparison between Worcester, Sussex, Somerset?
We have that.
What, what are they charging?
So Sussex is 85, Worcester's 80, Dorchester 68, Somerset 66, Caroline 76, and Talbot 79.50.
Okay. The, the part that's going to hurt, I don't have a problem with raising the per ton. I do have a problem with raising the, the sticker fee because what hap-
That is not being proposed.
We're not doing that.
I know. The trouble with the sticker fee is all the problems we're having with people throwing trash along the road. But a lot of these haulers also pick up trash from households in Wycomico County. So I guess my, and they're going to pass that on to the households in Wycomico County. Now, you got, you got two, you got probably several different kinds of people coming in commercially, but you do have the, the household commercial haulers that are picking up the trash cans along the county roads. Is there any way to differentiate their cost as a commercial hauler from the rest of the commercial haulers so they won't be putting those fees up to the people along the, the rural routes in Wycomico County?
Not easily. I mean, the only way-
Nothing's easy.
Well, but, I mean, honestly, the only way is that we would have to, um, and I'm not even sure, I'm, I'm-
I don't, I don't have the answer either.
So, and, and that is, again, the concern we have is that one of the ways they're going to be able to also affect change on that and not change all of their rates to the local is maybe their routes change, that the route isn't starting in Worcester and ending in Wycomico. Maybe it starts in Wycomico and ends in Worcester. Yes, that is a shift to another county, but that's not the county that I'm, I'm currently concerned with. I'm currently concerned with the financial stability, sustainability of our solid waste. I mean, when we had the auditors in here, council made the comment, well, is our solid waste an enterprise fund? Yes, currently it is. It is an enterprise fund. But we have to fund it like an enterprise fund. And the people utilizing, you know, maybe it'll change the household behavior, maybe there will be less, um, maybe they will recycle more, maybe they will compost more, maybe they will look at less, um, single-use stuff to help reduce the amount of trash that they put out themselves. Again, we need to, as the governing body that controls our solid waste facility, make sure it is financially sustainable and that it doesn't become a governmental fund like some of our other ones have had to. Solid waste facilities, unlike a civic center and an airport, should not be getting an appropriation.
So what are we going to be, about 20% higher than the, the next, with, with this proposal?
15. 85 is the highest, I think.
80 high, okay. And that's Worcester?
Uh, let's see, 85 in Sussex.
Sussex, okay.
80 in Worcester. But the other side of the coin is that we're not doing anything to household permits, and some of these places have a lot higher household permits than us. So in effect, what it could do is it could take a household and make them make the decision to stop having their trash collected and instead bring it in under a household permit.
Up it along the road.
Yeah. Question. Josh has one too, but I, I had an idea. Well, I talked about incineration. Obviously, that's not going to happen here because it's too expensive. But there's other counties that have that. Could we, or other states, rather, could we put it on a train and send it somewhere and let them take care of it? And then-
I mean, there is that, that possibility. We did not, in this instance, look at, um, Ocean City does not take their stuff to Worcester County landfill.
Right. They, they send it up.
Do you recall what happened to Worcester County landfill when Ocean City quit?
Yeah.
From here to here, just about.
Well, but here, so here's the thing. For our purposes, if it would save us a significant amount of money to not have to be building a cell every three to five years if a hauler decided that maybe we aren't their best option.
If all the haulers decide that, what are you going to do then? Then you, then you have no revenue.
But then we also have no need for a landfill.
You talk about expensive. When we, we, we are, this is a finite resource, right? There's, we're not building another landfill in Wycomico County. Unlike, I remember the days when we thought, oh, let's try to put it out in San Domingo. I lived right next door at that point. You know, like, that's not a good idea. There's nowhere else to go. So we need to make sure that we are protecting our resource, and we haven't been doing that. And it'd be nice in some way if there was a way to track this. I don't know if we could ever, if there was even a barcode system or something, somebody would come through. But the truth is, we've got people come from all over dumping in our area, and they're, and they're getting, they're taking our finite resources. So I, I don't know what that really looks like, but I, I only also say too, there are plenty of individuals with a household tag, you know, that, that go and have side businesses, retirement business. I know multiple ones who do it. And they go and they pick up things and they say, oh, no, this is for my house. I'm just taking it, dumping it in there. And even though they showed up with a refrigerator, you know, twice in a week, you know, that's what's happening. That's happening all the freaking time. So I don't know how we address that, but I do know that it's a finite resource and we need to treat it like that because when we have to go, you talk about cost, when we have to go and actually start shipping our, you know, trash to New Jersey and put it in their rivers, we're going to have to pay for that.
So this budget does anticipate increasing revenue by about $5 million by doing that 67 to 100. Of that $5 million, $2.4 million, we're asking for it to drop to the bottom line so that we can start building up our savings account so that we don't have to borrow for all of our next cell construction. We are behind the eight ball on this, and we will not be able to have enough funds when we're building for the next one. So we will have to still borrow, but hopefully we will be able to borrow less and thus there will be less interest cost having to be absorbed by the solid waste fund.
Is your $5 million based on the current tonnage that's coming in?
Yes.
But we're already saying that it may drop.
Drop. Even with the drop, the revenue will go up net because we're going to end up making more per ton. In addition to the fact, year over year, and, and I've, I've reached out and verified this to get concurrence of others in the industry, there's a 3% growth in tonnage. So yes, there will be a reaction to the price, and that should offset it initially and get people that are living here and disposing of refuse here bringing it to our landfill, which is what we want. But also, it just continues to grow somehow. And I, just after looking at study after study, what I can just relate that to is the availability of convenience goods and people, you know, nobody eats Whole Foods anymore. Everybody buys boxed, microwavable things. Everything comes in a package. Everything has child safety mechanisms on it, and this all involves plastic and boxes and stuffing. And thankfully, to answer, answer something you were referring to, Josh, we, we do have a pretty good diversion program, but it could always be better. Once a year, there's an annual tonnage report filed with MDE, and it describes gross, what comes into the landfill and what we do with each of those categories of recycling. We also looked at something recently. It's pretty exciting, and I'm going to try to wait to do a pilot, find a way to do a pilot program. But we went to a sister county and, and found a composting operation. And they've really made a success out of that. And to the extent we can look at what the food waste content is, what that stream is worth, that's another thing we can pull out of the waste stream, recognizing that that airspace is limited and valuable.
Yeah, that's 40% of what goes, 40% of what goes into a landfill is organic waste. It doesn't need to go in there. Yeah. An aerobic digestion, really, is probably where we should be going.
Buy some hope.
So that is, that is the request.
When was the last time the fee was raised?
2021, I think, was the last time it was raised. It has been since I have taken this job. So I think, I think it was actually 2021 budget, I was not involved with, 2022 budget would have been the year. So this is, it's been three years.
I can support raising the, um, the tonnage fees as long as we don't touch the sticker fee.
No sticker fee. And so what we would be presenting to council would be a resolution to raise just the commercial hauler tonnage fee. There is a small increase we're asking for, for like tires.
For tires. Now, it's not, again, it's not individual tires brought in. It's where bulk tires come in, you know.
Yeah, per ton.
Per ton.
So we're asking for that to be raised as well because they're, the market to try to get rid of those, right now, we're paying more than what we're getting paid to get rid of those tires from our facility.
So increasing the commercial rate looks like about a 48% increase. If we experience a 48% drop in commercial haulers, the dollar amount is going to-
But then we will have, yeah, but we will have less tonnage, which will mean we will also have less need to build. Our building timeframe would go from, our timeframe that we need to build the next cell is this versus a timeframe of going to this, which means that anything that we can put aside would also help us.
Simple terms, less trash, same money.
Correct.
We need to move on, guys. We do need to move on.
Have you ever explored that?
Shipping it, no, I have not.
As we're, we're already over time.
Something we-
Rec and Parks decided it was more feasible to do than-
I hear you say we're losing money on the tires. We're losing money on the current tonnage.
Something we need to look into.
How long have we been losing money?
I only looked at it over the last year. My guess is it's been multiple years because I don't think when we set the rate, we looked at the closing cost aspect of what needs to be. I think the rate was set on, again, it covers having salaries and benefits and that kind of stuff, but it doesn't cover putting away money to build the next. And that's what has been missing for the last several years. So the analysis was not done in the way that I, I did it this year to go, okay, wait, we need to be putting money away.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Recreation Parks. Mr. Miller, how are you?
I'll go over here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, it's afternoon, right?
Yeah.
It's like deja vu. I feel like I never left.
Me too.
So rec, we prepared for Rec Parks Tourism and Civic Center. You only put Rec and Parks on here, so we will, I guess, start with Rec and Parks. We're increasing the appropriation by about $423,000. That is to primarily cover pension, salary, you know, those main things that we talked about. And in addition, with the refinancing of our debt over the last several years, it did change the allocation of some of that debt. And so Rec and Parks actually had an increase in their cost for their debt service. That is due to the change in the, the reallocation of those costs associated with the projects that are still remaining and being done.
What's the debt service on?
The debt services, um, I'll have to go back and look.
Steve, would you happen to remember?
Are you looking for the account number or the amount? No, he's looking as to which project.
Which project?
I'll have to go back and look.
Purdue Stadium.
Purdue Stadium was my recollection.
Yeah, because we were kind of confused because we didn't see any capital expenses over the last couple of years ago. Where's the debt, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's due to the re, it's due to the reallocation of, because we refinanced over the last couple of years. And so it changed the formula as to how much went to each thing.
Sounds good.
I will get you guys as to which project that is, but I think-
I'm like 90% sure it's our third W Purdue Stadium. And the Civic Center one is the parking lot there on the Flanders side.
Okay.
I believe.
Okay.
So that's Rec and Parks. I did not go through, as, as always, Rec and Parks has changed programs every year. So program expenses, our revenues go up, program expense, revenues go down. It depends on which program allocations that we're looking at. So individual programs, if you look at the project number that's associated with them, may have changed. Either the program may have grown, the program may have shrank, but maybe, but most likely the whole, the, the net number that's going to the bottom line hasn't changed a whole lot because we try to operate that at, at a similar number every year.
Steve, it appears that your, your revenues, if I've got it right, your revenues have gone up about 10%. They're about, if I'm reading this-
For Rec and Parks, you're talking?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. It's about 6.4 million. And it appears as if the revenue's gone up about $638,000, it's about a 10% increase. I didn't know if what you-
$423,000 of that is appropriation to cover operating costs.
I'm, I'm just, the, the revenue that has come in, I'm assuming it's revenue that's, is there any actual revenue or is that, is that, is part of that incorporated with the 432 that the?
Yeah, the 432. So it, our original budget was $5.8 million. We're increasing to $6.4 million. $423,000 of that is related to appropriation increase because of increased salaries and expenses. There are some additional positions that we're looking at funding for, just due to the size of the department. There is some additional administrative positions that we're looking to hire to help with the management of three departments. And then those costs are split across three departments.
I think what we might be looking at more than anything is you've got about 200, 400 million in Pago this year, that the commitment is in Pago. And we were just kind of re-reviewing that. The Mason Dixon, does that still have a 500,000 that's a to be determined? Because it's supposed to be for 2025. Is that still under that category?
It is, yeah. We, we had talked to, and we've not gotten an official number, that's partly why it was to be determined, but we've, we've gotten indications from the town that they would be willing, along with the state and the county, to kick in to make that project go. That number was an attempt to get us to that, that final number, but we don't have that as a, an approved budget figure from the town, but that was the intent, is the town and/or the Board of Education, since part of that project was intended to help the school solve some of their parking issues in addition to the park.
You will notice that we did already remove all of the Pago funding for Mason Dixon. So the money that is in the, in the proposed budget is $1.1 million from a state grant, which was approved in the state budget, and then the $500,000 of to be determined. There is no county Pago in fiscal '25 for Mason Dixon.
And then I think we talked about this during CIP, but a lot of times when we use the to be determined, if we were to not be able to get that money, we would obviously shrink the cost of the park by value engineering, or we wouldn't get as many amenities as we were hoping for.
So you've got some more youth sports, I see?
Yes.
Any questions from anyone else here?
Can I ask one? Going back to the salaries, and I know you said that if the position's vacant, then it would, that's why there's the increase. For Rec and Park, I noticed three positions that are, one is a facility grounds worker, 10%, another facility ground worker, 24%, and then another equipment operator, 11%. And they're not vacant positions.
They could also have been a, I would need you to send me those specific numbers because I don't have that answer off the top of my head because they're not, that's not jiving with the information. Again, you have to understand, the budget is also created at a point in time. The vacant position list was created at a different point in time. So, that position could actually be filled, but be filled at a different rate than what we had to put in the budget because the budget has to be struck at a certain time. And so, please send me the position numbers that you're looking at.
There were a couple of others for different departments. I'll, I'll send you all of them.
Okay. So, again, that's.
That's the case here.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, if you have the numbers right now, I have them listed here, or however you want to do it. I know we don't want to talk about.
Go ahead and send them to me.
It's tedious. I'll, I'll email it to you.
Yeah, send them to us. But again, because, like everything, we have to create something as of a point in time, but we don't stop hiring. And so, we may have hired, may have put it in the budget as a midpoint number, but since then hired somebody, and thus, it looks like a growth because we had put it in a midpoint number, but that may not be what we hired it at.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Yes, Laura.
So, you do have several fees that are going up, is that correct?
Yes, we sent that list to Anjali.
Can you send it to me so I can make sure I circulated?
Yeah, it, it is primarily due to the, the $15 an hour minimum wage. So, we have to increase the cost that it, because we have to pay the people that are running those events.
Do you have any new programs that are, that we charge to extra fee or?
I don't think that there's anything. Sometimes, like, we're offering different, like with pickleball, we're doing different kinds of leagues, so we've kind of changed the range on that to cover whether you pay individually or you pay for the team. So, some of those costs are there. But as far as the new, new thing, we've had everything that has been on here, or we've come in front. When we do a new program, sometimes we'll come in the middle of the year or a new facility like we did with Pirates Wharf to make sure that we get the council approval on those.
So, council will need to approve those fees by resolutions separately.
Yeah, that typically is done, you know, the council adopts the budget and then also adopts the fee list.
I'll make one other comment on that. The minimum wage is the big driver, but also, any of our sports that require umpires, referees, anything like that, we're having a very hard time getting people that will consistently show up, people that know what they're doing, and people that are, you know, providing the experience we want for our leagues. So, that price is continuing to go up. That's more of a subcontractor type of situation and not an employee, but that plays into some of this. So, most of what I'm looking here is either increase in minimum wage or increase in umpire fees.
Awesome.
If there's no more questions on Rec and Parks, Civic Center, primarily the growth, there's $94,000 worth of growth due to the appropriation growing. That's due to increase in salaries in new positions, as previously discussed, because any, any new administrative position is split, split three ways. It is, it's funded by all three. So, Tourism, who is a total enterprise fund, also takes, picks up a share of any of that. And then, there is also a growth in our use of prior fund balance. Prior fund balance is primarily made up of the fees that we charge for having the rooms at the Civic Center. We set aside money for the restoration fund. So, we're using more restoration fund next year. So, the expense has gone up and so has the revenue. Otherwise, their budget is primarily being driven by salaries and benefits.
Any projections on, on how it will continue, or the Civic Center, I guess, and Rec and Parks will become more self-sufficient, and the, the general fund contributions will begin to go down at all?
It's been, other than the salaries, it's been pretty consistent since I've been, you know, the past three or four years. But actually, if you took the salaries out, the appropriation actually would go down this year. We've been able to kind of bounce back with the activity there, keep that at a good level, offer a good product. We're hopeful that with the EDA project, which is the seven million project we're doing to improve there with the grant funding, that we are offering an even better product that's going to be able to do more things with. I would say our biggest struggle right now is the price for artists is extremely high. So, those shows, which, those check a lot of our revenue boxes, bringing in a show. It's just very, very hard. And we've even looked at, we have the shuttered venue funds that we got, you know, that we were able to save with those. We've looked at using those to try to buy shows outright, which is not something we usually do. We usually are trying to work through our promoter. It's just really hard. We are, they're asking for, people that have one hit, want $250,000 to come perform. So, and the market can't support the ticket prices for that, and that's a lot of times we get, you know, why don't you bring in this person or that? The amount that we have to charge for tickets is not going to be supported in this market by, by the people that are coming to the show.
So, the Rolling Stones are out of the question?
Yeah, yes. For now.
If you're Rolling Stones cover ticket, cover band ticket, and you would pay for the Stones 20 years ago.
In the, in the 10-plus years I've been with the county, we have, have gone away from the concept, for the most part, of doing promote or co-promote because the last, it actually was when I was hired, we had two lost shows in the same fiscal year. And if we promote that, we have to take that loss. So, if the tickets don't sell at the price that we have to price them at so that we can pay for the act. And that's the piece that, when, when we set these ticket prices and they see all these fees being added on, the fees is where we're covering our cost for having the building there. The, the ticket price is covering the cost of the promoter and the act. And so, you know, you, you hear, well, you, you've added on these fees. Yeah, well, we have to have a ticket system that runs that. We have to have the people that come in to do those events. We have to have, you know, so we have to be able to maintain the building and replace seats and paint a ceiling and, and do all of those things. Those things are done through the ticket fee. The actual ticket cost, when you see that number, that number is paying for the promoter and the act.
Yeah, we don't usually keep the actual, like, base ticket price. So, if someone's renting the arena from us and they're coming in, we're not making, the Civic Center's not making money from the ticket price. We're making, the fees cover our box office, which while we're talking about that, we did not change the fee structure. We've not added on. We've not done anything like that. We're still calculating it the same way. We actually changed credit card processor so that we would not be losing as much on a credit card fee, trying to keep those low for the people buying. But we get the money from the concessions and the alcohol and the things like that. We're not really making, and the rent. So, someone comes in and pays us rent to use the space, that's where our budget's making the money. That $50 for the ticket is getting turned around and given to the, the promoter to pay out their expenses, so.
I can add one comment. Katie mentioned the $7 million EDA project, and we're very excited about that as far as a long-term prognosis of Civic Center. I do want to express appreciation to the council and to the executive for the other investments that have happened at the Civic Center. That's an aging building, we know that, but we've invested, obviously, for the roof, for the escalators, the video boards, a lot of the improvements that the people that are coming to use the building are noticing. And so, that investment is really important, to answer your question, Mr. President, about how do we move forward. That, that's a big part of it, is to keep the facility modern, usable. We've upgraded the Wi-Fi, some of the technological things that organizers are, are looking for when they come to our building. So, a lot of improvements have been made. We're really excited about the next year and a half, some of the stuff that's coming down the pike. So, anyway, I just want to express appreciation for that.
Appreciate that. I, I think it just represented the fact that we have a lot of confidence in what you're doing.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You don't ever share too many of those.
Yes. You talk about fees, that's the biggest complaint I hear about the Civic Center, is, hey, I thought the ticket was going to be 40. I get out there, it's 48 or 46, whatever. I don't know if you can find a way to just say, it's going to cost you $48 to get in because it's kind of like, you know, going to buy a new car and the dealer advertises it as at $60,000. When you get there, it's really $68,000. So, and I understand why you're doing it, but what I'm saying, that's the complaint I get.
Well, I will, can I add one, yeah, can I add one thing to that? The problem is, again, when we're doing a rental, they are in charge of the advertising of their act, and they don't want to advertise our fees.
So, they want the ticket, when they advertise, they want the ticket to say it's $40. So, I will say, we are, we just had a conversation, we had strategic planning yesterday, and we talked with the Civic Center. We're getting a lot of kickback from promoters because we do not use Ticketmaster. And one of the reasons that we do not use Ticketmaster is because their funds or their fees are way, way above what we're charging. So, I think, you know, I've talked about it a lot of times when I'm up here. Every year, we look at neighboring venues, their fees, where are we in comparison to that? We look at what we're paying. Our ticket provider's not changed what they charge us, and that's why we've been able, since we've had them, which has been.
I think it's 20 years.
Yeah, and so, that's why we've been able to keep ours the way it is. But we get kickback from promoters because they can do dynamic pricing. If Pam and I are sitting next to each other, she might have paid $50 for her ticket, but if I got the last ticket, I paid $120, like an airline ticket. We, our software doesn't do that as much. So, we're getting kickback from promoters, trying to work through that with them and people bringing shows here. But from us, it's not, one, the cost that we would have to pay to run Ticketmaster, and two, the cost that would have to be passed along to the, to the patrons is just not something that we're interested in pursuing at this time.
The dynamic is, that can, that can be a tough one.
And so, it has, it has saved, yes. You have a fee added on, but you go to try to buy a Rolling Stone ticket, Jeff, and it's going to have fees added on. And our fees are very comparable and actually lower than most other venues in the area. Now, yes, we are a smaller venue. We can't bring a Rolling Stones. They will not fit in our facility.
In like 20 years, when they're like Alabama-style, like need oxygen on stage, we might have a shot. So, don't give up.
They call it a convenience fee, right?
All right. We're, we're good? Everybody's good?
And then, the last one is Tourism.
Yes.
Tourism is a self-sustaining fund. They are covering all of their costs between grants and the hotel motel fee, and thus, we are not asking anything from the general fund. They are a balanced budget and doing their, their stuff.
Very good.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last item on today's agenda. We'll try to keep this one in under eight hours, okay?
Fire.
Is county, county fire companies.
All right. Are they here?
Saw President Ortell here.
Do you want me to join you or not? It's your choice.
We're ready for you.
Ricky, we'd like you to come up here. Come on up. We've got some questions for you.
So, I will let them introduce when, when they talk, as I stated.
We can do it ahead of time. Get it right now, but.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Billy White, chief of Sharp Town.
Holly Ortell, president of Wycomico County Fire Association.
Rob Frampton, Salisbury Fire Chief.
So, as you will notice, the budget that has been presented to you is a flat funding. This is primarily due to the fact that we are still in the midst of doing the SWAT analysis with the departments. In addition, council has received a request from administration to utilize funding from '24 to give them a capital number, but it would be 24 funds. And that number, then, we would look at each year at the moment, since they are not part of our capital budget process and have not historically been a part of our capital budget process, we are presenting to council at the, or we have requested, and I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, but we've requested that each department, each volunteer department receive $75,000 from our remaining contingency in fiscal '24 to help offset the costs of capital costs for them. So, again, they would receive flat funding in '25, but would get some money before the end of fiscal '24.
I was always under the impression you're, you're characterized as a capital fund, but I was always under the impression that the funding that we gave the departments in itself, for the most part, were cap, for capital expenses anyway. They have some operating, we understand, but that, it is their, their flexibility to use that fund, those funds for capital expenses as well.
They can, but we give them specific dollars to cover a workers' comp, and they have to prove to us that they spend it on workers' comp. We give them funding to fund, and they have to prove to us that they have had EMTs or paramedics on and on staff. So, we give them funding for very specific operating costs. And that is some of the grants that we do provide, is very specific operating cost grants.
I'll open the floor of Billy or Holly or, or Mr. Frampton, however you want to. If you'd like to have any comments you'd like to make.
Chief.
Chief.
Just starting off, I mean, thank you all for your time. We appreciate it as usual. They are, we are being flat funded this year, unfortunately.
Can we, can we have everybody introduce herself?
They did that, they did that at the beginning.
I'm Billy White, chief Sharp Town Fire Department.
I guess I didn't hear that.
Yeah, that's fine. And I'm vice president of the County Chiefs Association.
Oh, okay. Mike was off?
Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry, Mr. Holly.
Hold the mic, yeah.
So, we unfortunately have been flat funded again, or not again, but this year. The cost of everything, we come in here every year and tell you, it's going up. It's not going down. We put together a package, and I believe you all have a copy of it in front of you, that details our expenses and how much things have increased. I talked to Mr. Cannon the other day about a study that was done a few years ago when Mr. Culver was still in office. And based on the per capita, we are one of the lowest-funded fire departments in the county, or fire systems, I should say, not just fire departments, but fire and EMS. Per capita, we are one of the lowest ones on the eastern shore. Door, per capita, Dorchester and Somerset even fund more than what we are, so. Price of fire equipment, as I said, it's in the package. We just priced a piece of equipment the other day, a standard engine, nothing fancy, is $850,000. 10 years ago, that same engine was $400,000. Since COVID, the excuse is, everything's gone crazy, and we don't see it ever coming back down. And we do need additional funding. We can't keep going the way we are. Comments been made to have more chicken barbecues, but there's only so much manpower to go around.
Right.
We might say that because we want more barbecue chips.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. But we, we take all the help.
You run at it, you run at it 9 o'clock.
We take all the help we can get, so. As you know, we're having barbecues, we're having carnivals, we're having cash bashes, we're having gun bashes, anything and everything we can think of to raise money, but so is all the other organizations, the Legions, the Lions Clubs, the VFWs and so forth. So, we're competing for money that everybody else is trying to get as well, so. So, anything we can get to help us would be great. The CIP that they proposed, I don't, I'm not going to say I'm 100% against it, but I have concerns, and our department has some concerns as well, because it's a, this year we got it, next year we don't. Come the end of the year, when we send, submit our paperwork, there's a possibility that something we've done may or may not qualify. They could tell us, you know, if we put a new air conditioner in at the firehouse, like we've got to do, it may not qualify, or there may not be the funding there to do it, so.
That's the way the majority of the fire departments feel. They'd rather see it in the budget, see it at a one-time thing. They'd rather see it in the budget, see it at a one-time thing?
The five or six I've talked to, yes. They would rather see...
Probably six, probably six.
They would rather see it more guaranteed than something happened, and for whatever reason, it has to be struck, and we're not able to get it, you know, some kind of emergency or something come up, so.
Madam Executive, are you able to come up to the mic?
Not saying that we're going to be able to do this, but if we do find money in the budget, would you be willing to put that back in for the fire departments in the budget instead of doing it the way you've done it?
Yeah, I mean, I would, yeah, absolutely. I mean, if there was, I mean, we would have to look at where it was coming from and that kind of sort, but yeah, I mean, absolutely. This is why we proposed the way that we did. It's difficult because conversations were had that were not, it's in the past, so it doesn't really matter, which is why we proposed what we did, especially with the SWAT analysis not being done. We do have $1.3 million in contingency right now. So we have $1.3 million in contingency right now, that is just going to be absorbed right back into our bank account. So our thought was, why not do a budget transfer and give them each $75,000? I don't see how it wouldn't, like, an air conditioner would qualify. Like, the only thing that wouldn't qualify is you paying your EMS or paying your electric bill, any sort of reoccurring cost. But this was a way to get you money now, and then also, if the council was willing to reallocate, we would be okay with that. So this was, actually, Chief, you actually gave me the idea because you asked why we weren't part of the capital, and because you don't have access to Munis and things like that, you know, this was a way for us to do it. We would hope that this would be a reoccurring, but you are correct. We have it this year, we may not have it next year. But because of that flat funding, us having the contingency, it was a way for us to, you asked for additional $53,000 this year, we were able to do an additional $75,000, so you're actually getting an extra $22,000 with this. If you all feel that you don't want the $75,000 and you want them to cut other departments and allocate it, I'm good with that too, you know, depending on where they're cutting from.
What is the estimated timeframe for the SWAT analysis?
So they actually have a meeting tonight, and I think there is the funding component, I don't, I haven't, I've really removed myself from it, Wayne is actually really doing that. But Matt, do you have an idea as to how long they're thinking?
They didn't have a time limit.
Okay.
I would guess within the next month or two.
In the next month? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's time to wrap it up, it's been about six months now, so.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Chief?
So with what the budget committee, we worked out for the $53,000, and that was not put into the budget, and what the county executive came up with for the $75,000, several of us met with our department, and we are in agreements of that. We need something, we need something to keep the lights on, keep the wheels turning when 911's called, so we can get out and protect our community and the citizens of Wycomico You know, nothing's cheap anymore. Like the chief said, with their engine that they specked out, with what happened with Fruitland the other week, you know, they're, I don't know how much insurance is going to pay for it or whatever, but they're going to be looking at spending a lot of money. Just the equipment to get on an engine costs thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. Nothing's getting cheaper, fuel's going up, everything's going up, I mean, we all pay for it every single day. I am in agreements of whatever you can give us if we can get the $75,000, but we need reoccurring. We need also next year, you know, for the following, or for the following year, 2025, 2026, we have to know that we're going to still get money, and we just can't do a one-and-done. That's not right to, you know, we are the backbone to Wycomico County, the volunteer sector is.
I know I'd much rather see it in your budget, so you can spend it the way you want to instead of having to ask.
Council has that as the highest priority to make that happen. We just have to see how we work with the numbers and then make that recommendation for the increase.
I didn't know how you could do it when the budget was turned in and...
We do, is we're allowed to cut, just to make you, you may or may not, but we make the cuts, and then we make the recommendations. Like, if we cut a million from some other areas, then we'll say, we would recommend that 500,000 of that go here and 500,000 go there. It's up to the discretion of the executive branch, but that is what we, that's how the process works. It's a recommendation. So I don't think there'd be any pushback with you.
That's why I called her up here, and she said, depending on where we're cutting, if you're willing to work with us.
So, anything you'd like to add else?
I just, I just want to echo, I mean, obviously, we met earlier, I just want to echo what the chief and Madam President said. You know, five-year increase for EMS calls, 16.9% across the county, total fire calls increase over five years, 12.2%. They're doing more, and it was said last night, it's, every fire service publication you pick up, volunteerism is down across the country. Nobody wants to help. I mean, they can certainly vouch for that. I just want to drive home what Chief White talked about, and we talked about earlier, is the cost per capita that Wycomico County funds its fire and EMS service at. You guys are getting an incredible service from them for what I consider pennies on the dollar. And then just one of the added costs that's coming down the road next year that wasn't touched on, that's going to take a portion of that $75,000 if that's given out, is the NFPA medical physical standards going to require that there be cancer testing and mental health screenings for all fire and EMS? Doesn't matter whether you're a career volunteer. Just to give you an idea, we ordered 120 cancer test kits in Salisbury, they came in today, it was $22,000. That doesn't include the mental health assessments that are going to be required with that as well. And that's...
They're actually going to be able to do it right there at the station?
We did it last year for all of our employees.
How does that work?
It's a blood draw, it's a blood draw, we spin it down in a centrifuge, send it away to a lab, and you know, within three days.
If you've got any cancer in it...
29 different cancers it tests for, yep. And it does, uses biomarkers and AI and tracing to chase that too. We actually qualified for a grant this year, that's why we've ramped it up.
I was going to ask, is there's grant funding available?
There was grant funding this year, our initial purchase last year was funded by the city. We offered it to our career staff and our volunteers. This year, we are kind of up against the line because that grant runs out July 1, but the state appropriated $100,000, we were one of four municipalities to qualify for it, so.
I feel like we're getting enough support from the state association. I ask that because, you know, the one thing we can do as a county is we can try to work with the Eastern Shore delegation to see what inroads we can make with the General Assembly, but we really need to know where the shortfalls might be.
We get very little funding from the state. We get the AMIS fund or the 508 money, and other than that, we really don't get anything. And that's been my thing for years, is that we appreciate what the county gives us, there's only so much the county can give us.
Right.
But the state has access to funds that you all don't, through the fire insurance and so forth, which other neighboring states and municipalities use to help fund their fire departments, but the state of Maryland does not, except for the AMIS fund.
It seemed to always be pushing, you know, educational initiatives, transportation initiatives, and yet, I think one of the most, most important issues that we have, and initiatives they ought to be dealing with, is fire service, period. I don't know how they can ignore that from their, and I don't know what the triggers might be necessary for us to try to make some, a change of mindset in Annapolis, but anything you can help us with would be a big help, where we could go to the Eastern Shore delegation and try to move some things, you know, make some things happen up there.
I talked to MSFA, it's probably been five or six years ago, and asked some questions, and basically, we were told, be happy with what we got.
That's depressing.
I had a question to ask. We had a grant writer added to the, to our budget, right? I'm just...
Well, it is, it is proposed in the finance department to receive, to do a grant administrator, that person would be a combination of looking for grants and help managing grants. And this could be one area that they could look for grants.
There's a lot of grants, and then, you know, I used to help write grants for another fire company, and so you're going up against lots of other fire companies for these grants, so you don't even know if you're going to get it.
Well, I was just, I'm just bringing up, because I know some fire companies don't even write grants because they don't have a grant writer or anything.
We, we could look at whether or not this is an area that we want a grant administrator to focus on as well.
Okay. Joe?
The $75,000 one-time funding, that goes to all the volunteer fire departments. Does it go to the three city fire departments also?
At this moment, it's not planned to do that.
Okay. So Chief Frampton was in and presented a very good case and brought us a lot of numbers for the 100% increase and the other million dollars to go to the city. And he said he's on the Fire Chiefs Association panel board or whatever, now when...
I'm here. This is it.
Yeah, okay. When, needless to say, when this budget first came out, phones started lighting up, you know, about the city getting an extra million dollars, basically doubling. And the chief said that the Fireman's Association was in agreement with all this, is that correct?
Chiefs Association, Matt, we discussed it, you can ask Chief Frampton, I asked some questions, and the committee went along, and we made our presentation to the county exec.
Okay, so Chiefs Association's fine with it?
I'm not going to say everybody...
How about the Fireman's Association?
I was going to say, I'm not sure everybody in the Chiefs Association is 100% in agreement for it, but...
Well, here's, here's what I heard, you know. They're saying Salisbury is one fire department with three buildings, and what I've heard from a couple different fire departments is, hey, if we build another building, are we going to get double the funding?
Valid question.
We have three districts that we cover.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
So it's...
But I'm just telling you what was relayed to me.
It's not about the building, it's about the territory.
So if another fire department goes down the street and builds a building, puts a fire engine and an ambulance, so would that double their funding?
If they want another district...
We went that route a couple years ago, and it didn't work out for us.
Didn't work out for you.
No, it didn't work out for them, worked out great for us.
Yeah, okay, all right, I was just, I'm just relaying what I heard, so.
Josh, you have a question?
Yeah, just, I was just going to say, of course, I said it earlier, but I want to reiterate that I want us to all get to a point where we can look at a per-call basis or some sort of formula that makes sense with a, I would love to see with a general baseline for, per, you know, per firehouse, a certain amount goes in, and we can all feel confident about that going forward for many years at a time. I know we've got the SWAT analysis, usually a SWAT analysis is a qualitative analysis, not a quantitative analysis, but I'm assuming that there's a component of that that is quantitative, so we should be able to, at least looking at a formula, I think is probably going to come out of that. But whatever it is, if not, okay, one way or another, I want, you know, we should be able to have some sort of formula that is clearly we can all agree on and not, I mean, because I feel like I've been in the same conversation again and again, year after year after year after year. I do miss going to the, you know, the Hebron Casino Night and other events like that, but obviously, that can't be our, that can't be what we're doing, you know, long-term, that's not a real solution. So I want to get us to a point where we can feel confident and know, you know, many years going out that we have a plan and that it makes sense based off of, you know, an equitable formula. That's where I would like to see us go.
The SWAT analysis has been brought up several times. The SWAT analysis is to determine how to improve and enhance the EMS service for Wycomico County. It's not anything to do with the fire service. And whether there's a funding matrix that can be developed out of that, I'm not sure, but it's how to improve on what we currently have. Right now, the county gives us money, we hire our own EMTs and paramedics, and we have them in our own stations. You know, sometimes we're fully staffed, sometimes we're not. There's just not enough providers anymore to fill all the positions. When we started this back in 1998 or 99, whenever it was, you know, there wasn't jobs all up and down the eastern shore for providers now, which there is. But that's what the SWAT analysis is, how to improve and enhance. I don't know where the funding aspect of it keeps coming out of it, is we're going to be able to come up with a matrix how to fund the fire and EMS completely. There might be something that comes out of it for the EMS part of it, but it's not 100%, so.
I think, Madam Executive, when you turned in your letter for the SWAT analysis, what you wanted to see the boxes, there was a funding mechanism in there, right?
It was one of the things that, those were the things that we had asked for based on what was told to us, but at the beginning of the SWAT, which you're on the SWAT, so he did that PowerPoint, and it was decided in the first meeting, I wasn't there in the first meeting, so whatever was decided amongst everyone, these are potential topics, and then it was decided amongst the group what would be discussed.
If you read...
The thing I know that was taken away was the fire aspect.
Fire aspect, that's correct.
So there is a funding mechanism.
If you read any of the other SWAT, it all comes down to funding. If you read SWAT analysis from other counties, it basically all ends up coming down to funding.
You know, here's another thing that you think of, you know, each fire company that has the medic units, we, you know, we do the billing through a third party. So many people in Wycomico County are on Medicare. It's, you know, it's relatively an older county, and we don't get what we're asking for. So an $800 call, we might only get, what is around $240 in...
That.
Yeah, if that...
40% was the number they heard an hour and a half ago. That's what we found out yesterday from our billing company.
And then, if we take someone and they do not have insurance, we bill them, but we don't go after them. So, you know, our hands are tied, it's a service that we have to provide. You know, if somebody stubs a toe and they call 911, we have to get out there to them, and if they want to go to the hospital, you know, we're going. They don't have insurance, you know, how much did that just cost us with supplies or whatever? You know, so the funding for each of the volunteer stations, we truly, truly need. I can't express how important it is, and, I mean, you guys know, several of you get out to our association meeting every month, so you see what's going on.
But we appreciate the presentation, it gives us something to review and to look at there, and we will certainly get back to you, let you know, as, we're about another week or two away from actually having our final recap for the budget, and that, that way, we'll know exactly where all the numbers could fall.
If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call and ask.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We'll be glad to answer them for you if we can, if not, we'll try to find the answers for you.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chief.
May I?
Not related to fire, so they, I shine. Or, they're done. I did want to provide to council analysis that I did, just so that they're aware of the use of fund balance over fiscal '24 and proposed fiscal '25. This analysis shows where we started '24 at with the audit, what things council has approved to spend in that, what we're requesting as Pago, and where we would end with the Pago that's requested, and where we would end if we had, which we did not, fund Fruitland primary with Pago. So I'm going to give this to Laura, this can be passed out. If council has any further questions after they review it, please let me know.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Can we move?
Second.
Hi.